Call the meeting into order with a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Childs.
Here.
Dr. Jacobowitz.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Ms. Slough.
Here.
Mr. Michael.
Here.
Mr. Shawsey.
Here.
Ms. Shear.
Here.
Mr. Spicer.
Here.
Rice for the badge, please. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a quick meeting tonight?
I don't know, we'll see.
Why, you gotta have data or something?
Yes.
Yes?
We're lean.
We're lying.
Okay, we have a...
Why? That was all the way. That was the point. You're all lying right now.
You're all lying. Should we start all over again? Mr. President?
You don't have your... Go green, please.
I don't think I want to.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a proposed executive session. Upon a particular individuals employment history of particular individuals and corporations on to seek legal advice, may I have a motion to some adjournments?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We are in executive session. Please go... Please go re... Go green. Go green. And we'll open the public session. There's no resolutions coming out of executive session. So, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone who's signed up for addressing the board? Or anyone who would like to address the board? You can come forward to the podium and you have two minutes.
Hello. My name is Naiba Muhammad and I was encouraged to introduce myself and tell you about what I'm doing. So, I am a graduate student at Adelphi University and I'm an intern at Kingston High School under Tina Dierna. And I'm in the Internship and Career Center. And I just wanted to thank the district for allowing this center to be at Kingston High School. I'm an alum. I graduated in 2013. And we didn't have this. And I can see the impact that it's having on the students. And Tina does a lot in the Internship and Career Center, but I'm seeing the fruits of it and I think it's amazing and I wish there was the opportunity when I was there. But it wasn't, I'm not complaining. I'm here and I'm doing well. But I just wanted to... Yeah, all right. And I just wanted to say that it's a great thing and I'm glad that it's at the high school. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else to address the board? Okay. Approval amendments for the November 6th meeting?
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor of accepting the amendments of November 6th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously adopted. Superintendent's report. Dr. Padalino.
Thank you, Mrs. Shawsey. First thing on superintendent's report tonight is our principal's report. And Dr. Aaron Pares is here with the staff from Robert Graves Elementary.
Thank you very much, Dr. Padalino.
Might be the whole staff, I don't know.
Three quarters. Yeah, it's a lot. Three quarters. It feels like just yesterday I was, well, central last year. Goes fast. I just wanted to start off, this is one of many sunrises at Robert Graves, like the sea in the morning. It's a beautiful place and incredible. I'm gonna start off with one of our main goals, which is chronic absenteeism. This is definitely an issue that Robert Graves has been dealing with and it covers most of our subgroups and our entire population. So, we have been focused on this since the middle of last year and we're making some progress, but it has been a challenge. I started off by presenting to our kindergarten parents about this and I've been working with my team at length. Really what's been best is the teachers have taken this at heart and they are working with the kids daily and they're letting me know and we're trying to make a big impact on this. We've been having incentive programs and we've been focused on really encouraging students to take control of attendance and parents. Almost daily, I'm pulling parents in. We're having positive conversations about a really tough topic, but it has been making a difference so far. We keep close stats on our attendance. Mrs. Binney, our social worker, reviews it and we have monthly celebrations with students in each grade level that have accomplished the highest attendance. I've been not so affectionately called the attendance Nazi already. Yep. And like I said, the kindergarten parents, we have a series of contracts and forms that we send home to let people know that attendance is very important. And we start with kindergarten, talking about the importance of kindergarten attendance and how that is something that we need to look at at Robert Graves and attendance develops successful students. Community involvement is a big part of Robert Graves and part of our sub-plan as well. And we've had some incredible programs this year. Our Veterans Day ceremony was a huge hit. We had an unbelievable turnout and the students were... enjoyed it and so did the vets that came. Our grandparents' day was a new program this year that we celebrated where we invited grandparents in and we had almost 400 grandparents come in. And it was a shock how many came in, but it was enjoyed by both grandparents and students and the staff. We were definitely surprised at our turnout. We've had fire prevention stations this year and just instead of presentation, they came and the kids went to go out and see the trucks. And our resiliency movie, which is coming up, and with the resiliency movie, we have ninja warrior games. So, we're hoping to really get the kids excited and pull the parents in. Our community programs are also educationally based. We had an SBCA program where we had dog food and cat food donated and the kids calculated the amounts and help provide those amounts, carry them out to the car. Our Veterans Day ceremony, the kids learned songs and they sang the songs and they learned truly what Veterans Day meant. They didn't just participate, but they understood after a while, learning about those songs and what those veterans represented. It was an excellent day. Thank you. Thank you. Trauma-informed education. This is a district goal and this has been something that we've started working on this year. We're doing a book study. One of the main pieces with trauma-informed education is the focus on the relationship and that's something that we have done for years at Robert Graves. So, we found that this trauma-informed education is really pairing well with what we've been doing and some of the successes we've had. The resiliency movie, we're working on showing that and the staff's been working on it and we're also learning how to identify these students and understand truly what they go through. Differentiation of treatment of students has been something we've done at Robert Graves and has also defined our success. So, we're really happy that the trauma-informed education is part of our curriculum and how we're working with students and we feel it's gonna help even more. Through GTSD survey bullying still continues to come up. So, what you're looking at is part of our display and this is a huge display in the cafeteria. Last year, we started talking about defining bullying. Now, it's in the cafeteria for the parents to see, the monitors to see, and to talk about so they can understand how to define bullying, what it is, and how we can help deal with it. The monthly character traits, we do this, we get this out and the teachers talk about it with the students and it's another good way we've helped define PBAS. Drew Bryant is also a program we started last year. He comes in and works with some of our most at-risk students, the boys, during lunch and it's a kinesthetic program so that they really get to enjoy Drew and learn about respect, responsibility, and really makes a connection. Our garden continues to be a highlight. We've paired with Hudson Valley Seed this year and we have a solid curriculum that the students and the staff really enjoy. And the garden's beautiful. Down below on those pictures, they're doing taste tests. So, it's been interesting, some of the squash and the different tastes that students are trying. All of them loved. Ah, summer reading challenge. And this is where I've had a good time in many years. This is in the spring up there, ladies, around June. Many of the teachers dress up and they talk about different books that they enjoy reading and they encourage reading for the summer. And part of that is an incentive. If the students accomplish reading a certain number of books, I get to do something crazy. Last year, they didn't make it. So, last year, I had a year off. This year, they made it. We had set a goal for 119 students. We had 139 that actually read and participated over the summer. And that's me, covered in shaving cream. It was exciting, they had a lot of fun and definitely motivated them. We have a new autism spectrum disorder class program. It is really brand-new this year and this has been a big challenge and also something that we are really proud of the work we're doing. It has not been easy. It has been a program that I have learned so much already about and something to be celebrated because these students really are special and it takes a certain incredible staff to be successful with them. So, it's a budding program. We're learning, we're training, but it's something I'm very proud of. Setting high standards is one of our main goals at Robert Graves. Our opt-out rates last year was a big focus and for ELA, our overall opt-out rate is 94.4949. So, that's what I calculate. We'll see what the state comes up with. For math, it was 96 percent participation rates. Continue with our STAR focus and our state testing. But our opt-out rates, we had an incentive for that as well. And our incentive was if students participated above the 95 or close to it, they get to throw water balloons at myself and the teachers. That's not just me up there. That was intense, having about 100 students throw water balloons. Our STAR performance, we continue to shoot high and it's Robert Graves on the left, our performance compared to the district, and we're consistently higher. We set high expectations for our students and they frequently make it. Whenever I'm giving a presentation, I hate to be redundant, but in this case, redundancy is positive. Once again this year, Robert Graves has a higher overall performance for ELA than any school in the district and our performance on ELA is higher than the state averages. We've dropped a little bit in ELA. So, we're very proud of our performance in ELA and our math is even higher this year than it was last year. So, that's us in the purple this year. That was last year. Our percentage of level fours went down slightly. Our percentage of level threes is up to 38. So, for math and ELA, we have the highest scores in the district and our scores are higher average than the state scores. So, excellent job. Our staff will be celebrating that too later on in the year. It's not just incentive for the kids. Resiliency, that is part of trauma-informed education. And we are a motto of resiliency this year. This has not been an easy opening at Robert Graves. We have had many challenges that we have overcome. We have had multiple students with some very serious social-emotional issues that we have been working on and we have many staff that have dealt with very difficult personal situations. So, we model resiliency every day by the hard work that my staff does and I greatly appreciate their hard work. It's been incredible. In closing, I have to recognize Dr. Fela Sello for all her support. This is Lewis and Mrs. Twilley helping with our new autism program. Dr. Padalino, the board of education, constantly support us. And the Robert Graves family. We truly are a family. We work together, we play together, we grieve together, and we rebuild together. That is something that I'm so proud of our school for and I can't thank them enough for all their hard work. Thank you, Robert Graves.
Mr. Jacobowitz, yes?
Thank you for a great presentation. I'm glad to see that the garden is still thriving and that the kids are eating stuff from the garden, fruits and vegetables. I'm interested in the autism program. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how, like whether and how that classroom and those children are integrated into the rest of the school and how the interaction works with other kids in other classes.
Right now, we're working hard to get the program fully up to speed. We have K through 1 classroom and then a 1 through 3 classroom. Our K through 1, 2, depending on the students, is more autistically based than the upper level. So, we're working on phasing in the entire program within the next 2-3 years. Right now, we're working with OSIs to really define the program and to determine how they fit in with everything. We're not fully there yet. We're learning as we go and we... There is a training being set up for both our teachers and our teaching assistants after school. It's gonna help us define that program more as we go. So, it's in progress for certain. And how we dovetail in with all the students is yet to be fully defined.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan?
Hello, Dr. Pares. It's lovely to see you back again with all of your enthusiastic teachers and staff numbers. And I just wanna thank you for really focusing on attendance and making that a highlight because we all know if the kids don't come, they can't do well. And I just am so happy to see that you're shooting over the state average for math and reading and I really appreciate the effort to set such high expectations. And I know it's because the staff is having fun that you're reaching some of those goals. So, I really, really appreciate it and wanna thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Spicer?
Good evening, Dr. Pares. And to the entire Robert Graves family. I feel like a member of your family because I started reading to one class and then the next schedule filled up immediately and I was ushered into all types of different classes and meeting the entire family and felt very welcome there. And I would agree with Suzanne as well that the whole program, and start from the top, that the whole program at Graves is a family, supportive, professional, and high standards. And you could feel it when you walk in the door. It's every child, every day. You can really feel it and every family. And I'm just proud to be part of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I attended the Veterans Day ceremony. It was... I was very impressed with it. Kids from kindergarten through 4th grade, they all had different ta... Different perform... Well, I don't know what to call them, performances or activities. And the... I don't... I think there were maybe 30 or 35 veterans and they really enjoyed it. So, I congratulate you on that. I know that... Saw several faculty members that were very involved in it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Shawsey, one thing you said about two board meetings ago was that through the board of education, it's taken a lot of time to see the fruits of the labor. Gave a presentation on that. That's exactly how I feel at Robert Graves. This is my 12th year and I know, time flies. But it has taken us time as a team to build and really to develop the success that I feel that we're having now. And I think could've done it without my team, but it is the long-term goal-setting and the hard work of K through 4 that has resulted in our success.
Thank you. Well, it is usual for us to take 13 years to graduate a student from kindergarten through 12th grade.
Thank you, Dr. Pares. Next thing on superintendent's report, we have BBL at KSQ and Mr. Clapper with our second century project report.
Thanks for having us here, Ken. We'll talk about the second century project. Carly has some highlights of where we are with the work going on. Things are going well with the contractors and coordination. Got some great photos of the activities. Have maybe a dozen photos, but reality, there are hundreds of things going on daily on-site. I just wanted to do a snapshot of it.
Good evening, everybody. Lots of great things happening over at the high school right now. We've accomplished a lot of work in the last month since I saw you all last. The saw cutting for the underground piping is finally complete. They infilled most of the areas already. The rest of them will be infilled at the end of this week. They opened up a lot of more... A lot more work on the ground floor for the other contractors to get into now. In the auditorium, the new stage flooring is going down right now. They put down the plywood underlayment. Now, they're putting down the maple floor on top of that. That'll be done within the next week or so. Additionally, in the auditorium, the ceiling is being painted. They're starting that later this week, early next week. All of the new lights are in. The sprinkler piping is being completed as well. We're continuing with mechanical, electrical, plumbing roughing throughout the other 2 floors, the first and second, in the new bathroom. And then on the second floor, we're working our way top to bottom with the bathrooms. We have sheet rock going on in those rooms. We started putting up a ceiling grid for the new hardwood ceiling that goes up in those areas earlier this week. And right now, they're roughing in for new light fixtures that go on that ceiling, exhaust fans, all of the mechanical and electrical work that goes above the ceiling. This is the new stage floor on this side. They finished all the leveling underneath and then they started to put the plywood down. And over here, you can see the actual flooring that's being installed right now. They're probably about 3/4 of them done. The new lighting, it is so much brighter in there with this new lighting. It looks great so far. This week, they're putting in the new fire alarm panels on the ground floor, running all of their conduit and everything that hooks up into these new panels. In the classrooms and all the existing rooms that we're patching, we're continuing going through on all of those floors, patching existing holes where we took out casework or there was outlets or wire mold or anything that was on the walls that came out, we're patching those areas. This is the second floor bathrooms, starting with the sheet rock on the walls and putting up the new ceiling grid in anticipation of the new ceilings that go in there. Up on the mezzanine above the auditorium, they loaded in some of the new equipment that goes in that space as well. Then we get new... Aluminum panels that go on the outside, building kind of like what we did over on the wings. Maybe not, something like that. They're silver panels like we have at the end of the additions, so they'll match what we did previously. On the first floor bathrooms, they're continuing with framing. They started floor leveling in the bathrooms that are completed. Next we'll follow with sheet rock. On the ground floor, they finished putting in all of their new piping. They're filling this one in right now. It actually was filled today and we'll be putting concrete down tomorrow. That is our last area. And then this is the new nurse... What will be the new nurses area. We filled that earlier this week. And then the first floor bathrooms, finishing up with the plumbing roughing within the walls. Just photo of the first floor corridor. And then on the ground floor, this will be one of the new art rooms. They're continuing with wall framing and roughing in the whatever goes inside of the walls such as outlets or roughing in for sinks that go in some of these art rooms. And then this will be the new adapted PE room on the ground floor. A photo from last month and we've continued with a lot of the framing in this room as Anyone have any questions or comments?
The light looks so much brighter throughout the building, even in the basement. You know, just having the windows exposed, it just looks like it's going to be so much more of a great environment for the kids. It's great. Thank you.
When you showed the inside of the auditorium, one of the things that I think makes it look brighter and maybe cleaner is... All the things that were hanging off of the balcony, are they going back?
They will be going back.
Okay.
But we're also taking down this plywood up here and I believe they're going back in that area.
Oh, so they won't be hanging off the...
Well, Mr. Rosa and I have been discussing that. There's 2 columns of legs on either side that are gonna remain, but all the ones on the front of the balcony are gonna go back up in the eyebrow.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think right now, we'll take a strategic pause for everyone from Graves so they can go. Their students are coming to school early tomorrow whether they're... Whether they sleep tonight or not.
Can we ask BBL to give us a...
Yes.
Review of the bids?
Yeah, we'll stay here. Okay, we do have a couple of questions for Tom and for BBL. Do you have... Tom, do you have something to say?
Well, there's a couple of items. I'll let Mike talk about part of your plan and the things that came in. The chairs that you see before you are Irwin chairs. They are... The Irwin chair, an Irwin chair is the basis of design. This is more of a light color and style. As you notice, the side panels are all different. Some of them have a different footprint. But when you're building an auditorium, you use several different sized chairs so that they all sit from each other so everybody gets to do it. And that all has to be designed. This is more just for the flavor, what we have and what we're gonna fill in. And we'll have... There's one more chair that was the exact basis of design that we'll bring to facilities so that we can decide on a final chair and then lay out.
So, that's the 18th?
That's the 18th.
Okay.
My guys were a little overzealous. I said, "I need those chairs over there from facilities" and they brought them over today. That's why you had to split your seating. And the other thing is they've been in my warehouse for about 3 weeks and my guys have had the pleasure of sitting there. They've formed their own opinions also on the chair.
So, will the fourth... The fourth style be here?
The fourth style will be here. Nickerson was the supplier of that chair and it's actually at Miller right now. It's on station.
So, the fourth chair is a different...
Well, it's all the same company. It's just a difference, it's like, as you can see, there's a low back, there's a curved back, there's a square back. There's several different patterns to the chairs.
But this one is a wooden one on the back?
Some are wooden in the back. The basis of design was wooden in the back. There's some pluses and minuses to that. Some have wood handles, some have plastic handles. So, there's a lot of options for these chairs. So, this is really just kind of a preview of options and colors and stuff. I would guess there's probably about 35 colors. One of my guys said we should go with the Mustang yellow.
Oh, no. Derny.
Again, just to get your point. If I could just add, the basis of design came from meetings with stakeholders. So, there's been some dialogue and engagement to develop the basis of design, which Allen's office has the quote for that and so on. But we can... If there's a real strong opinion about we like these kinds of arms or wood back versus plastic back, we can make those modifications and reshuffle the, you know, the layout and make sure we get the numbers.
Did I understand, Mr. Clapper, to say that there were gonna be a variety of chairs in the auditorium or no?
Not styles. In order to maximize sight lines, there are... There's 22-inch chair, 21-inch chair, 19, and so on. And they make those... They array them in a different format to make sure that everybody has a sight line. Chair style will be the same throughout the 620 chairs.
But there'll be different heights?
There'll be different widths.
Widths?
Not heights, widths.
No heights, widths.
I hope not the high back, 'cause I gotta tell you, I sat in that. It hits me right... Like, I could not sit in a concert. I'm being serious. I would have to stand in the background of a concert if you put those in. Because it hits you right and I don't know if it would do... Like, Nora thought it was really comfortable.
I... Well, but I'm sure that...
And I would like to vote for the wood back. I think it... There's a feeling of authenticity and quality in this space, especially when you enter the house, you see all the, you know, the natural wood. And then the rest of it can be metal and fabric and so on that's scrubbable and cleanable and so on. But anyway, that was the sentiment that the stakeholders had.
Well, I think we also need, what holds up the best?
They're all... They all...
Well, I don't know with the plastic backs or...
Either the plastic, the wood, any of the chairs, they're all like 50 years... Either the plastic, the wood, any of the chairs, they're all like fifty-year chairs. They're all well-designed. The product underneath, the nuts and bolts of these things are very solid. Irwin is the leading chair manufacturer that got to their appearance, like stadiums, Metropolitan Opera, they do a lot of big jobs.
What is the color of their curtain now? Because it's not the Dating Game curtain anymore.
That's a great question.
Isn't it burgundy?
I think it's a burgundy.
It's burgundy, yeah. Because they replaced the old seventies print.
The Dating Game one.
Yeah.
Does the, does the style affect the cost, or are they all around the same?
There is a little delta in cost. And obviously, wood back is a little bit more, and metal panel is a little bit more, there's a design on the end panel instead of the middle panel. There is a little bit of that. And again, we'll bet that all out, and then we'll bring a recommendation from the facilities.
Well, I agree with the wood back. I mean, if we can, if that fits within the budget, I think, I think that's much more certain.
I like number one. I think that's the one on the...
That's the one with wood back.
The wood back.
The other two are twenty-one.
No, this one says number one. That one says twenty-one.
Yeah, it's a different number.
Each chair has, each of those chairs has a different number, and that one, I believe, is number one. Is that right?
Yes, the other two are twenty-one.
Oh, the other ones are both twenty-one? Okay. One was three or something like that, no? Okay, anyway.
The wood is stained, right, on the sides of the auditorium?
Yeah, all the wood is stained on the sides.
Maybe that's a good intro for, for the chairs. We recently took bids on the capital project recommendations provided for the district. We spent a good amount of time with each of the low bidders and the second-low bidders, just to make sure they're qualified bidders. The project came in nicely under budget. I'm not a water pool or any questions. We're waiting for, for, we're waiting for all of our people to start working on that.
Well, we just got these this afternoon, so we usually go with your recommendation.
Mike, how far under budget are we? About one point five round numbers. One more question.
So we can go with the wood chairs?
It did.
Well, I think one of our goals also is maybe to use some of that money to do some of that work at Edson that we talked about.
There's a, there's great, good coverage, because ironically, bidders are bidding and filling up the room next summer. I do get, for example, I have three electrical bidders, three really good contractors to work with in the district has also. The difference between bidder one, the low bidder, and the second bidder was ten thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars. So we're really headed out there, good numbers. We need to go with the good numbers. It's a good team effort.
And we've had experience with a lot of the bidders, some bits and bad. We've got a really good team to run the thousand and...
So, Mr. Olson, you'll give us a, that's the normal sum, bid summary that you prepare? Oh, that's it?
Well, that's, yeah.
It's in your library.
It's in your library.
Oh, it's in the library?
It's in the library also, that's the hard message.
Okay. Thank you.
James?
Any other...
I want to ask Mr. Cogger about the work in the swimming pool. What's the...
So the status on that is that the mechanical engineers have been working on with KSCU. We have a design, we have dates set, milestone dates to get it out to bid early in January, I believe. Or, no, actually, we're going to try to get it to SED in December, and then depending on their turnaround time, which we've been kind of promised, it's going to be a quick turnaround. We're playing and going to bid as soon as possible after that, maybe in the February range. Quitting order, we have it by December.
Thank you.
And I have had positive feedback from the band, if that's there.
Have had some good jobs.
I've been by there probably ten times since I've installed it, and the coaches, you don't even hear it, you don't notice it, but it's making a big difference in airflow.
All right, you want us?
I have a question about, since everybody's here that might know the answer or parts of the answer. So there's a, I understand there's a bill that's on the governor's desk now to increase the, the amount of work that can be done at a school of...
So the bill, the bill was brought forward by the Building and Grounds Association, School Building and Grounds Association, and we felt that our, our support and all of it. And it's been also recommended by the school board and the superintendents associations. And it's gotten through, it's definitely gotten through the House. I believe it's gotten through the Senate, and it's sitting on the desk of Governor Polo right now. And the highlights, the reader's digest of it is, is that they want to go from a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then secondly, there, there's also like an attendant that where it can be more than we get the school to appropriate the money, because we have to pay for it, we have to appropriate and pay for it, and we have to reimburse, that we do more than one school in a, in a school year. And that, there are sister bills that can either be passed together or sent. That's my understanding.
We'll check with Ms. Goode to see what the status of it is, because there's really a bizarre process about how a bill goes to, they're delivered in stages to the governor, even though the legislative session ends in June. It's really bizarre. Anyway, so we can discuss that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you, Dr. Pedalino and staff. Board of Education, teaching and learning, Dr. Chudubul.
The teaching and learning committee met on November fourteenth. We looked at October data early as a baseline to see where our students were testing. And we also looked at growth data, June to October. And the big takeaway from that is that we're seeing more high growth than we have seen in the past, so our kids are kind of moving around, I think of it as a circle, because it's a pie chart. They're kind of moving more into the high-growth areas. So that's very encouraging. I mean, there's still a lot of work to do, but it's encouraging to see that. We talked about how the summer programs, which really focused on literacy, were probably contributors to that. So that's encouraging. We talked also about assignment of teaching assistants and really starting to think systemically about how we assign teaching assistants so that our students' needs, particularly one-to-ones, are being met, but also kind of thinking broadly about where those assistants are placed and in what classrooms. We talked about mental health first aid and suicide prevention. This is a program that Mrs. Jordan had heard about and that some school districts are employing in their district. It's kind of, it's taking the concept of first aid, of physical first aid, and applying it also to mental health. So we're looking at the possibility and the feasibility of doing that kind of training in our district. It's, it's a big deal, and it would involve a lot of time. And so we're just kind of in the beginning stages of seeing how feasible that is. We continue the conversation that we had begun at the last TNL meeting and that we actually then also had here at our retreat last week, I guess that was, about expanding access to advanced classes at the middle school. And that turned into also a conversation about all the different kinds of opportunities that are available at the middle school to get high school credit. So that was encouraging. I think it was a great conversation, and I so appreciate the committee's ability and, not ability, but like willingness to engage, just ideas. I mean, it was just an idea that we had about this opening access, and what would that look like, and what does that mean, and is it even feasible? And those are always just great conversations, but it's because people are willing to say, "Okay, so let's talk about that, like let's think of that through." So in the end, I think one conclusion that we came to was that we really need to understand and think about and identify when there's disproportionate participation, whether it's gender or race, in any of our school opportunities. And when we see that, we need to investigate it and understand it. So I'm hoping that these conversations will continue about access for all of our kids. Those are, they're just great conversations. We circled back a little bit to the middle school reading block, talked about how that's going at the middle schools and the kinds of support that teachers at the middle school are getting to really be able to work on reading and literacy with their kids. And then we had a final conversation about the parent portal and Office 365 as tools that parents can use to help support their kids at home, and that those can be great tools for parents to really engage with their students and then help with their kids with missing assignments and all kinds of things. And that maybe there's a way to publicize that a little bit more through a tutorial on the website that's underneath the parent tab, or through open houses, or, you know, a whole variety of ways. So that was that, that was the TNL meeting. Our next meeting is February 27th, which feels really far away, but I'm sure is not. Any questions or any comments from anyone else on the committee?
Wonderful job.
And I think we covered the entire agenda, I believe.
Yes, which was unusual.
In the ninety minutes scheduled.
Yeah.
So that's, maybe it was ninety-five minutes.
We might have gone over a little bit, but okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Jordan, the policy committee?
Yes, thank you. Policy committee members were heroic and met on the fifteenth since we weren't able to meet when we were scheduled to. And we had quite an agenda. Unfortunately, we didn't get all the way through it, but we too were just, we're trying to take what we learned in the workshop regarding race and, you know, disparity between what we should have and what we hope to have. And we're, we talked about in our retreat how we have to look at policy and budget if we really want to change things. So policy committee, I think, is going to try to add that lens when we are reviewing policies, to make sure we're doing everything we can to promote that. And the first thing we talked about, Mrs. Lakai was there along with Mr. Olson, talking about our purchasing policy. And they had recommendations for increased limits for the quotes when compensation, competitive bidding is not required. And that is on page nine and 10. If you have looked through the, for the first reading of that policy today, it would be page nine and 10, section 5B, one and two. And the recommendation was based on the escalation and inflation of costs. And so these are supposed to be small projects, projects that don't have to go through the full bidding process. But because costs have escalated so, it makes it impossible for them to really address those projects that they should be addressing in a kind of short fashion, rather than going through the whole bid process. So those recommendations are in the new policy and just brought the limits to the point where they could actually go ahead and do projects instead of just being cut off. Am I explaining that appropriately?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. So that is one of the policies that we are moving to, well, we're just asking for a first reading tonight, and we will be voting on the adoption on the 11th of December for that. So if you haven't had time to review it, please do so, and if you have any questions, or if you have any questions now about that to address, okay? If not, the other thing that...
Wait, I'm sorry. I have a question about the voter registration.
No, I'm going on to that.
Can I just make one comment about the purchasing policy? So the limits are, the upper limits are set by the state, so we can't change that. It's the, it's the gradation between a single quote that we need or, and then...
We're getting multiple quotes versus getting multiple written, written quotes versus the state.
Right.
Thank you. The other thing that we tackled was voter registration for students. It's a newly required policy, and we did have language from NISP, I believe, that we went over, and I believe that Mr. Verge also might have made some recommendations for us. It's changed to election law, and it now requires school districts to adopt a policy regarding voting, pre-registration of students, sixteen and/or seventeen-year-olds. The sixteen-year-olds have not yet been covered. They're going to address that in the coming year, and so we will, we tried to write the policy so it would be okay, because when they provide us with the documentation that we have to pass on to the students, we will do so. But we didn't want to have to go through it yet again, so I think that the language that we proposed, and you'll see that when you look at the policy. So as soon as, if the state, in fact, comes up with sixteen-year-old registration forms, we will provide those. And now, that really is being done anyway, and our district has a longstanding tradition of voter registration in the high school. And they have, I think they mostly do it through social studies classes. I'm not sure if they do it through student government, but those will continue, and it will just be augmented by the sixteen-year-old registration when that comes available. We even talked about if we have to have it available in the middle schools, we will do so. Okay? And we postponed, we did talk a bit about computer use and instruction and acceptable use policy, policy 4526. We have postponed any recommendations on that policy until the tech committee meets, which will be, I think it meets on a quarterly basis. And so we've asked them to look at the policy and see if there's any way of increasing or, or providing training for teachers, like professional development, that would give them the best access for using computers in their rooms without threatening the security of our system. So there's this delicate balance between wanting to provide access for very legitimate means, but also the fact that a computer network has a lot on it, and we don't want it to be threatened. So we had that conversation, and we're asking for more guidance from our tech people. And then we'll get, we'll, we'll address that at our next policy, and it will continue to be on the agenda. And we also will have homeschool students on the next agenda and extreme, the red flag law. We talked about it, but we haven't come to any conclusion. Unfortunately, it seems the red flag law, with all the good intentions it has, was not written very well. So we have to make sure that our policy is in line with what the state's standards are, but we don't want to exacerbate any weaknesses in the law. Do any committee members have anything to add? Because you know me, I have no idea what I'm talking about.
I want to clarify something about the voter registration for the kids.
Yes.
It's not mandatory, right? And it's not going to be any, you know, county levy for anyone that's not registered, right?
There is absolutely no retribution or requirement. It is just an availability for students and education around it. So absolutely not. You're right.
Thank you.
So both of those policies are up for adoption at our next meeting. And if you, again, review them, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
We also had a discussion about the board committees.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I did follow up with NISP and had a conversation with, and now her name is escaping me. What? No. Keep guessing, but it doesn't matter. She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but she was, she said that we have a very unusual situation in Kingston with inter-municipal agreement that we have with Deats Stadium. So we talked about the possibility of, I explained to her that our concern is we want to make sure that we have a trigger for going over and reviewing that agreement so we don't lapse. And she suggested that maybe we want to make it part of the, help me, Mr. Shonisley.
Reorganization.
The reorganization meeting, so that, yes, it was Jessica Goldstein, thank you. And she thought maybe if we put it in the reorganization, that would be one way of addressing it, and it doesn't have to be policy. And I thought that was a really great idea.
I'm sorry, what, I missed that, your last, it does have to be...
No, it would not have to be policy. She said you could have a very specific, short policy that addressed what the reorg would trigger. So that we could say, for instance, there will be a member of the Board of Education that serves on the recreational... that serves on the Recreation Committee of the City of Kingston for the purpose of, you know, we'd have to, I can't, I'm aphasic right now. So anyway, but we would have one or two sentences specific to what Mr. Michael is now doing on that committee, so that the committee member kind of knows what their obligation is. And in the year, that, that policy could state, like every three years, they would be responsible for bringing to the attention of the board, you know, the re-up of whatever.
But you're saying, Jessica Goldstein is saying, instead of taking us back to policy, revisit this when we do the reorganization?
Well, she's saying we can put it in the reorganization calendar, part of, you know, where we have to up everything that's due that year. But she said it might be wise to also have a very specific policy just for that, because it's not commonplace for school districts to have inter-municipal agreements where you have a committee that's both one board member and then everybody else on the city that, you know. So it's something that I think we have to revisit at the next board meeting, or the next policy meeting, but I do think it was a really smart idea to put it on the reorg.
Yeah.
Okay? And the other, I can't remember, I don't have that note with me, but she's supposed to get back to me with whatever suggestions she had thought of. Okay?
Okay. We also talked about committees of the board versus noncommittees of the board.
Oh, right. We did have that conversation as well, in terms of having one or more members on all the district committees, not the board committees. And so she agreed it may be a good idea to have one or two, and one would be a voting member or a participant in the committee, and the other could be an alternate, just to ensure that there's always a board member present. But her, her understanding was that it only really relates to a quorum, and when she found that we have a nine-member board, she wasn't sure if that was important or not, and she's also supposed to get back to me on that.
Okay, and that was brought up in connection with the re-establishment of the district leadership team. And Dr. Pedalino asked that we limit the board to one member, which is our advice that we, our council's advice. And so, I mean, this is still something we have to work out. So the first, the first meeting of it is tomorrow afternoon. And so my proposal is that I would be the, I'll attend that meeting as the board representative or board liaison to it.
Excuse me?
Unless there's some objection. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Consent agenda, are there any resolutions that members would like to have removed for separate consideration from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Discussion, are there any questions that a member might have about any of the resolutions?
I have one on C S thirteen. Change the following monitors, Mohar Preschool from two and a half to five hours. So there's four of them, it's, you need more.
Yeah, so we are under new, so basically, we need to have more adults per student in the classrooms than we originally had assumed in the beginning.
In the classroom or in the monitor?
In the classroom, in the classroom.
So they're considered monitors and not TAs?
Yeah, they're not TAs, they're monitors.
Oh.
So we have TAs and we have monitors. So monitors are going to be able to come into the classroom. It's, as far as the regs around UPK or pre-K is concerned, they don't have, they just have to be, they can be a monitor or a TA, they don't have to be...
Okay, I was thinking it was the lunchroom monitors.
It is.
So they're, they're doing that also?
Yeah, they're going to come into the classroom also.
Okay.
And support the teachers.
Okay. But is two and a half hours enough, or five hours, for breakfast and lunch?
That'll, well, we rotate them also, so it's enough for them to cover the time they need in the classroom and still cover the breakfast and lunch.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
So I do want to just introduce, we are, on the consent agenda, we have an acting assistant principal who's going to be filling in at Kingston High School for a while, and she is here tonight, and it's Christina Bartley, and she's right in the back, and they should stand and welcome. She's coming out of our faculty from Kingston High School, so that's, it's good in one way, it's bad in another, but we're happy to have her stepping into a leadership role, so welcome Christina.
Vote, we need a vote. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously adopted?
We have three donations.
Okay, yes, we do.
We gratefully accept a hundred dollar donation to the Mohar Pre-K Center from the Ulster Savings Bank. We gratefully accept a donation for two hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Meyer PTA. And lastly, we gratefully accept a generous store credit of a thousand dollars from Burlington Store, adopt, adopt a classroom dot org, and that's for Bailey. A thousand dollars from Burlington Stores, Adopt a Classroom.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
Can we applaud for that?
I think we need more coats and such for students.
Oh, how wonderful.
Old Business.
Okay, I have a couple questions. I have something for Old Business. The last time we didn't speak about, we, we okayed it, but we didn't speak about and discuss the pay raises for substitutes. So I think we should have discussed that the last time, and we didn't. So the subcleaners, clerical food service, and monitors was up to thirteen dollars, and the bus monitors were fourteen dollars, and the sub TAs went up to fifteen dollars. We voted on it, but we never did discuss it.
Right, we didn't discuss it.
So that was approved the last time, which I'm glad. Now, another thing that I have is, I've been getting calls about this, and I know we discussed it, the volleyball nets at Chambers. I got another email today. It's not, I guess it's a group, a night, adult group, I guess.
Yeah, it's a building use.
And my understanding is the insurance purpose, we can't do it. But I guess there's holes in the gym. A couple of years back, they had new holes drilled, or two new nets, for two new nets, but they can't put the two new nets up, they can only put one.
Correct.
My understanding, why can't they use the rollout ones like the school does?
And they can.
And it's against the, the insurance says we can't.
Yeah, our insurance company says there's not, there's not enough space there to actually have two, you know, groups playing at the same time in that, in that gym.
Okay. So is there somebody who can, who, I don't know who's in charge of the spotlight ball team, or is it town or something?
Well, it's a building use, it's a building use. I mean, they're an outside group, and it's a building use, so we'll see if we can, and they're emailing you, so I think they...
I mean, I don't even know, I don't know anything about this, so...
Yeah, I mean, if you want to refer them to me, and I'll have, and I can talk to them.
Okay, I don't know who's in charge of, of, is it Hayner who's in charge of that group, or?
In charge of the volleyball group?
Yeah, the town of Ulster, I guess, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I mean, I think it's the, I think it's the Ulster Volleyball League, or, I'm not sure what their, what their, we can look at their building use form and find out. So let us do that, and we'll make some calls.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, if somebody could just, I don't know anything about it, so they keep emailing me.
Okay.
That's it for Old Business, thank you.
Robin, Dr. Chikovitz?
I just wanted to have a, a follow-up conversation about the retreat that we had last week, which I thought was very, I thought was really productive. I thought it wasn't easy, but I was pretty impressed with the conversation that we had, and, and very happy that we're talking about these things and moving forward. One of the things that we had talked about in that meeting was, so what are our next steps, and what are outcomes from the training? And one thing that came up was to promote study groups at the school level. And I would, I would like to propose that, that we do that. I know that we have study groups that are currently going up to school levels around all different kinds of issues. I think trauma is actually the real, the focus that I'm on this year. But I would like to see us also promote book studies and conversations about race and equity. I know that we have some books in, we have some books in the schools already, and so I don't know if we can put a call out to, to each school to say, we're, you know, this is something that's a priority, and we'd like to see each school have a study group around it, and, you know, and then, of course, they decide how that works. Is it concurrent with a current study group, or they want to wait till it's over, and next semester, is it better to start next year? You know, okay, what, you know, whatever works. And then maybe the team at the high school, so Kathy, Cassandra, and Amy, who are pretty fabulous, and I'm pretty glad that we have them as a resource. I mean, maybe they can meet with the, the leaders from each building, or, I'm kind of volunteering, not... Just to talk about how their study groups went, and what some of the pitfalls were, and some of the lessons that they learned, so they, so that they can really help guide that process.
I think that, on December ninth, is that, eleventh? December eleventh is our next board meeting, and that, according to my goals, that's one of the reports I have to do on our cultural responsive education progress, and what we're doing this year, and I can get that information and bring that back as part of that report, what is going on?
Okay.
And then what do we need to do? Because a lot of times, we're talking like this and that, I'll go on the person and say, well, we've got twenty people doing this, and...
Okay, no, that's great, that would be helpful.
So I'll come back with that information, and then we can decide where we want to fill in the holes. And I do want to second that, you know, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Capez, and Ms. Saletti were unbelievable as far as facilitating, very patient, very, I thought they did a great job.
Yeah, they were great.
It was, it was nice to have them here, and really proud that we have people that have that capacity in our faculty and staff to come and do that type of workshop for, so it was great.
Yeah, and I'd just like to piggyback on what, what Dr. Chikovitz said. I think it's important to get the conversations rolling in the schools, but I, I think it's also important that the board continues the conversation. So I think if we're not going to explore that particular reading further, we need to select a new one, because we have another retreat scheduled for February, I believe.
So we need to get started with the book.
That, that book was a very hard read, and I gotta tell you, I, I didn't enjoy the book. I went, I went back to reread sections of it because of, of those three ladies, and they did an incredible job with us.
We did ask Ms. Saletti if they would forward to us a reading list, and I think they're working on getting that together, so probably send it to Dr. Pedalino or Mr. Shonissey.
And I, I'm sorry. Just wanted to let the committee know about the books that we did. It was a book written by Robin De Angelis, about why fragility, and has the whole concept of racism in America, and East Coast general, what happens today. So we had a very great conversation, where we are, and where we need to go. Get out of the ocean? Mr. Spicer?
It's true.
So just wanted to let the committee know what it's all about, this book study.
I, I also would love to see something on the web that had a book list, maybe the, the things that are being read around the district, because I think a lot of parents and community members might be interested in just sharing in that as a resource, and the more people we can get reading about it, thinking about it, talking about it, is positive, I think.
I thought you had one, but, Ms.?
Yes.
Toni Heitz's book.
Yeah.
Did you want that one?
Well, I would, I mean, I, I've read it, so I don't have...
Oh, Toni Heitz's book, yeah.
Yeah, it's between me and the world.
Yeah, it's good, yeah.
And Ms. Capez mentioned one, I think by the same, it was by the same author?
He's written quite a lot.
Yeah, Ms. Capez mentioned something, and still did.
I think Ms. Saletti is giving, is gonna, I think they're gonna send a reading list, and that may be on, I mean, that is a great book.
Yeah.
We have the updated annotated board calendar in your board library. According to it, the next, the book study is January sixteenth?
No, I thought that was our mid-year retreat.
You need to read the whole of it in March.
Well, March was the NISBA goal study that I wanted to bring up as Old Business anyway. So I have down here, book study on January sixteenth and April fifteenth.
What's in February?
I don't have anything in February.
I think originally, what, excuse me for correcting, but I think originally it was going to be in February, and January is when we usually have the board-only retreat, which most of the board wanted to continue, I think, when we discussed it last year, mid-year.
Okay, well, I mean, we can change it then. There's nothing in, I don't have the calendar, well, I'll bring up the calendar. I think we have board meetings on January eighth and, and the twenty-second. Or what, no, actually, oh, so we're looking at February, right?
Why don't I have one retreat on January fifteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, on my calendar.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. That's when you have to read.
Yeah, but, oh, do I have it right? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I have the wrong date there, January...
The sixteenth, nor, what did you say?
Mr. Shonissey, you're right, we have a...
Fifteenth of January, yeah.
We have book study to be announced later on January sixteenth, and the other one's on April fifteenth.
But I think I made a mistake on that, because I think this would be, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at...
It should be fifteenth, because Wednesday night.
What did you say we do on the sixteenth?
For the last two years, we've had a board-only retreat mid-year.
I, I'm sorry, I copied that down, because last year, that board meeting was on the, that board meeting was on January sixteenth, and I, so that will be a board retreat on January fifteenth?
Not up to me, that, the board...
If, if the board is agreeable, and then we have, in February, we have board meetings on the fifth and the nineteenth.
So the twelfth?
So February twelfth would be a candidate for a book study retreat.
Sound good.
Okay.
Say that again, what date?
February twelfth.
Have you chosen the book yet?
We haven't chosen the book yet, I mean, unless you want to select the...
Well, this is for the book study, right?
Right.
I mean, let's see what, what the list is that we get.
I'll reach back, I'll reach out back to Ms. Saletti, back out to Ms. Saletti tomorrow and ask her if they, any progress there.
They probably have other things that they do.
Yeah.
Like here and there.
Just a few.
And to, to piggyback on what almost everybody said about the last retreat we had, and the one before that, so you're going to talk about race. I, I agree with Dr. Chikovitz, and Nora, and what everybody else said about how we need to let this bloom and move through the district and see book studies and other things being done to continue the message, but I, I also wanted the board to know, for all the committees I sit on, and I'm new, so I don't know if this was always, or being supported by the retreat that we've been having, but the amount of conversation about diversity, inclusivity, and equity on all of our committees is just amazing. It's like almost the, the first thing that comes up. So we sit on teaching and learning. How many African-American or children of color do we have in, in the advanced classes? So we, we sit on policy, and we talk about issues of, of diversity and equity. It's happening everywhere, and that's one of the hugest things that can come out of all of the, the retreats that we're having, that the board itself is looking to implement all these things we're seeing. And for, for those of you in the audience who don't know, what James Michaels was talking about was... about was, in our board retreat, we talked about, there is an ocean of challenges for people of color that a lot of people can't see. And if you're gonna solve the problems of your families of color first, you have to see it. And that's what this board is doing, just, I, I, I know, Mr. Sunshine, but I'm just so proud to serve you all. I am.
That's where you are, you.
Okay, uh, that's it. So I'd like to bring up, I'll revisit the, uh, NISBA goal setting training. Uh, you asked me last time, uh, to get back to NISBA. Uh, the four, the price for a half-day or four-hour retreat was eighteen hundred dollars. You asked me to, uh, see if there's a, uh, a price break that would be for a three-hour. I haven't been able to talk to Jamie first in yet. I have a, a telephone conversation scheduled tomorrow morning. Can you give me some guidance on what target is?
I'm thinking two hours, two and a half hours. No, I, I, I don't know. I mean, it's just, that sounds excessive. First of all, four hours is a lot of time at once.
At the end of the day.
But also, at the end of the day, but also eighteen hundred dollars is a lot of money. So...
Camille, how is our budget after the conference?
Well, I'm still waiting for claims to come in from the conference, so until I get those, I can't, I, I don't know. I've only gotten two so far.
About two hours for five hundred dollars.
Hmm, I don't, well, I don't think that's, I mean...
You have to remember, it's an hour drive each way.
How about seven fifty? We'll try and get, and we'll come up to eight hundred.
We'll feed him dinner. Well, I mean, we have to see...
We'll go to NISBA. I don't know.
The school band.
We'll give them the same lunch.
I was gonna say, it's two hours. We'll give them the same lunch we got at NISBA.
Two hours here is four hours for him.
I mean, Mr. Perna, I guess it does depend on how much is in our budget, right? I mean, we, is it possible that we could afford an eight hundred dollar retreat?
Eighteen hundred.
No, sixteen hundred.
Eight hundred, because we've already said eighteen hundred is...
Oh, oh, you mean the half, half price or lower?
Yeah, I mean, you don't, it's fifty, right?
I have to check.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much is left. Yeah, maybe close.
And then, and we should decide whether that's what we want to spend all of that money on, because I'm sure, I'm sure we also are paying the, you know, we have other retreats and other...
And we have other obligations that need to be, yeah.
And we have other obligations, and we may not be able to commit to that.
Mandated trainings that need to, to, to be finished too, as well.
Right.
So, let me check with the budget, and I'll let, I'll let you know in the morning what's there, but I really encourage those who have claims out to please submit them.
Well, I would, I mean, here's, if we're gonna get a, if we get a lot of, if we would get a lot of value out of it, I don't think eighteen hundred dollars is excessive. If you consider what we spent on going to NISBA convention, now, I took six, I had six hours of sessions. And how much did that cost? For me, nine hundred dollars, I mean, the registration and the hotel.
Yeah.
So that was just for six hours for me, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So, I don't know what the budget for the entire board was, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, I think it's like ten thousand to begin with, and the convention eats up a lot of it.
And it was much worse in New York. We may see, be significantly less.
It may be, but there is a lot more mileage too involved, and I, I didn't get all those receipts in yet.
Yeah, but not really, because parking in, in the city was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, but not everyone went to the city either. So every, almost everyone went to this, to this NISBA conference. Y'all slept out to Rochester.
Well, okay.
I mean, Mr. Shaughnessy, to your point, I, I agree that there's some value in it and that we, and I do think it's a good idea that we have, um, a consultant who works with us on goal setting, so I agree with that. And I think you can, you should see how low you can get them to go.
I think we should get Margarina on this, because she's much better at the, at the fees costs than anyone else I know.
That's not a bad idea.
Well, one of the reasons I think that, that having, I mean, Dr. Pedelino went to a session, went to the session at the last, in October, and the, the, you know, moving the goal, the board goal setting, uh, to earlier in the year, in this, you know, in the autumn or fall. I mean, for instance, you brought up, uh, a board retreat, board study groups throughout the district. Now, that's something that really, I mean, I would think that that should be done, you know, December would be a good time to do it. Uh, if there's any cost involved to it, it would be before the budget. Uh, it's a lo, it's a goal that, I mean, if we set a goal in September, the, you know, what kind of goal can we get to have completed by June? I mean, we, you know, we've got to think about expanding the board, expanding its goal timeframe.
Well, the main idea, we talked about the goals, to expand them through the following year, not just early on the year for the current school year, but go into, roll into the following year, or whatever, down the road, three years or three years. To set up our long-term goals, go along with that short term.
I did like the, the presentation that I, that I went to at NISBA. I did like his, his philosophy around that, because, I mean, I know, right now, over the last few years, John and the TNL team has been pushing really hard to do things to, so we would get within this really short timeframe for goals. And if we were able to do eighteen-month goals, then we would really be on the pace that we'd like, that we could, we could, I mean, we're giving you the fourth quarter report in August.
Right.
You know, and, and those kind of things where, you know, if we had the eighteen-month goals kind of thing, we could, we could get into a better rhythm as far as reporting to the board and adjusting our goals, at least our instructional goals and our needs around our budget.
But with all the data coming in during the eighteen-month period, would that mean the goals would be more malleable? In other words, adjustable according to the data that comes in?
Give us more opportunity to adjust, for sure. And, well, not, maybe not adjust the goals, but maybe adjust our strategies.
Right, right, right.
I also think we need to think in terms of that expenditure for the board training, that maybe not everybody has to go to every NISBA event, um, every year, and maybe if we look at it for ourselves, like, we'd have a big training for the whole board and use some of the resources in that way, the way you're suggesting for this training. And then, maybe we circulate the opportunity to go to the NISBA conventions, so that, I mean, we can report back, we can share the information, we can share a lot of what we learned there, and, um, and still not cost the district a lot more money, you know? So I think that's something to consider, anyway.
There weren't many workshops that we, there were more than one person in, though. I mean, I, I attended totally different than...
Yes, I know that's true, but we still would have availability for a lot of the slideshows or, you know, and people could make sure they cover it in a different way. I'm not saying only one or two people could go, but we have a nine-member board. So if even four or five people go as opposed to seven or eight, that's, that's a sizable chunk of money, even if it just pays for books, you know? I just think that we have to look at that.
Right, or three of us go, like...
Right, we could...
...elections, you know? rotate it, three, 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 like that.
Perhaps the newest board members go.
And ahead of time, because we, we have the schedule, um, early enough of what the workshop offerings are, that we could really decide as a board, what is most valuable for the board, what we're working on in the district, I think, because three people could cover eighteen sessions. I mean, good.
Right.
Good. And the law conferences, although they're very attractive, and I've gone to several of them myself, are offered in, in summer and also, again, in winter, so we could still go.
They're actually, I, I went to both, one at the conference and one, um, down at, um, South.
Ma'am?
No, it was, uh, it was one of the schools right off, three-way harem, you know?
Hiram Woodbury?
Hiram Woodbury, thank you. And, um, I found that actually better, because first of all, you weren't so burned out after it, that it took you a couple of hours to recover, and they were really focused on the stuff. It was just, they had great presenters, it was a day, and I thought that I was really able to consider what they were doing rather than go right into some sessions where I thought personally I lost a lot. So, um...
I don't think any of us attended the law conferences, Sharon.
Well, Herb and I attended one up in Auburn in July.
It was great.
Right, I think it's...
And it was an all-day conference, it was, it wasn't nine people.
Well, I think, I think maybe it does make sense to look for professional development opportunities that are available to us through NISBA, and then think about them more systemically, and we can spread them out a little bit better, and then maybe use other resources to do things like, you know, development that we bring in for people.
As I've said, I know that I've done some of the webinars, and I would be, I think I'd get more out of it if I sat here with a few other people, and then we could discuss it afterwards, you know?
Yeah, the webinars are actually pretty good.
Yeah, they are pretty good.
So I think, Mr. Shaughnessy, get them as cheap as you can, see what you can do.
Okay.
Be as frugal as you can.
Um, new business. Is, if, is there any, any other old business? Okay, new business, we have one item that's on the agenda, BOE thirty.
And I would like to pull that and have, is it right to pull it now or not?
And pull, how do you mean?
Questions?
Well, we, we'll move it.
Okay, go ahead, move it.
No, you can move it.
Oh, I can move it, okay, I'm moving it.
I'll second.
Okay, so I don't know, do we need to read it? Or usually if new, a new, but it's on, it's been on the agenda, right? So there's no, so just for the audience, this is to send one, two...
Six.
Six, um, faculty members to San Diego in January twenty-third and twenty-fourth to High Tech High, um, for, uh, training. High Tech High in San Diego is a very well-known, um, type of P-Tech school, project-based instruction. Dr. Corey at, uh, at BOSI's is very, um, supportive of it, uh, and sends, uh, BOSI's, uh, administrators and, and faculty there. And, and actually, I think they're having, uh, something next summer here, they're bringing instructors from High Tech High to, uh, to New Pulse, uh, for a multi-day, uh, conference or, or training. So I'm certainly, uh, in favor of this resolution.
There's also a description that was put into the, into the, um, library of kind of what the flavor of this is. And this is, this isn't just a trip, they're not just going on a trip, they, they took part in professional development during the fall, this will continue into the spring, and we're looking really to, to continue that professional development and to pilot this program at Kingston High School next year. So, and then hopefully grow it. So it's really kind of a mix, I want to say it's a mix between, you know, a lot of the things that we're looking at around CRE and, 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 you know, um, restorative prac, restorative practices, mixed in with what's going, with a P-Tech kind of approach to it, a project-based approach to it. We're one of about ten school districts, I think, that are working on this down together with SUNY, with, not SUNY, with, uh, Ulster BOSI's. So I think it's a good opportunity. And again, I think it's another way that we take, and I often say, we find different ways to reach different kids, you know, whether it's P-Tech, whether it's Montessori, whether it's, you know, looking at High Tech High kind of things, though, these are the different, just different options for us to offer our students, who have different learning styles or different, you know, interests. So I think it's just another one of those ways that I think makes us progressive, uh, to be able to offer that at Kingston High School.
Is that regents week?
That's regents week, yes.
So we're not even, they're not even missing classes, so I mean, it's...
Right, right, it's, it's, that's strategic, and it's only two days.
So, I have a few questions then.
Sure.
Is it thirty-five hundred dollars for all of them together?
All of them, yeah. We put that as not to exceed, we actually think it might be a little less. They, they really got creative, they really want to go. Um, they are creative, they're shopping their airfare, and they, they actually are gonna go to Airbnb, so they don't have to, so, which is much less expensive than a hotel. So a lot of those things, they're, they're really being creative, because they want to, they want to go out there and experience this, so...
So if BOSI's is sending people, couldn't we just have BOSI's? They go to BOSI's when they come back?
Yeah, we could, we could have, oh, you mean a turnkey thing? Well, I mean, that's part of the, that's kind of the, the professional development that they're doing now is with, is with BOSI's, but I think the experience of going out there and learning directly from the people at High Tech High is something that, it thinks, we think's pretty valuable, and part of, part of this program, and see the school and kind of that whole, because this is a whole school that's, that's based on this.
Is that the closest?
Uh, that is the High Tech High, yeah.
The only one? So they're gonna...
We, we might be the closest, we're, we're looking to be the East Coast High Tech High, that's kind of what we're, with this Ulster, Ulster County.
They're also gonna do two more sessions in November and December, so what is it, through BOSI's?
That's through BOSI's, we'll be down there.
And what's, who's, who, at high school, who are they targeting? All, all grades?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, we're, no, next year, we'll be targeting tenth grade.
Just tenth?
Yeah, ninth and tenth, we'll be.
Oh, ninth and tenth. But then, there was also something in here about K.
Oh, yeah, doing, yeah, doing a program where they do, uh, work together with, with the pre-K program, so coming down, kind of doing a collaboration where students come down, and, um, the garden is a pretty good example. So one of the things they're talking about doing is, is an outside garden here for our pre-K kids involved in that, and so that's kind of like the agricultural piece of that project-based learning, um, approach.
I think this is really exciting. I've heard great things about the High Tech High, I know how excited this team is, and I'd be really, um, excited to bring this kind of instruction into Kingston High School. So I think it's a great endeavor, and I'm really thrilled that we're thinking about doing that.
And I can appreciate the concern of, you know, how much it would cost versus going to New Pulse, but I think that you cannot replace that enthusiasm and buy-in to see it firsthand, and I think for that excitement then to become contagious when they come back, it's really important that they have that opportunity, and I don't think that's an excessive amount, or for the bang for the buck you're gonna get for them to go.
I agree. I would agree, and wholeheartedly support that. I think it's an exciting opportunity for our faculty.
Okay. Okay, uh, Dr. Corey will be here December eleventh, and we can ask him for, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't vote on this now, we vote on, we can get more information from him, from his perspective of it, because he's a very, uh, he, he's a very high, he has very high praise for High Tech High. And another thing that I want him, if he can report to us, well, this, that's separate, we'll have the board member. So, is there any other discussion here?
Yeah, so, the people who are going, are they, I know Saletti and Bartley now are not teachers, are the other four teachers or...
Yes. And actually, when Christina was picked to be in this training, she wasn't an administrator and wasn't even, we weren't even really thinking about that, but she's been through the training, and now she will be taking over, you know, in one of the cohorts, so it'd be good for her to have training as well still, continue.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, unanimous? Any other new business? Board member announcements.
Well, we did have a coffee and conversation that moved aggressive, and many of the board members were there, and just a few members of the community. Unfortunately, they've had some, some struggles recently that, um, they felt might have suppressed their, their attendance, because they were dealing with personal issues in their congregation. But we still had a lovely conversation, and, so, and there were cookies.
And I think we had a good conversation with Reverend Clark and some things that he can bring back to his congregation when he speaks, and so he did ask us some very specific questions about things that were going on, and wanted to, and wanted to be able to communicate, um, you know, to his congregation when he had the opportunity. So even though they weren't there, I think we did, we did give him a lot of information for him to pass on, so I think that was, I think there was a lot of positive things that came out of eating those, just us. And one other.
Yeah.
Reverend Clark and then a, a member of, of...
Minister William? Minister Parrish?
Parrish, yeah, he was there, yeah. That was right, too.
So when is our next coffee and conversation? Do you have a schedule for that?
Uh, January at, um, Boys and Girls Club.
January fourteenth.
And if you remember, last year, that was very successful, and we were able to meet And if you remember, last year I was very successful when we were able to meet some students. So we kind of have a captive audience there, and I know the, the staff over at the Boys Club will make sure kids come in.
So January fourteenth is a Tuesday, right?
This time we bring little Debbie.
Yes.
Bring snacks for the kids.
Oh, one of the things that I would like to get information from Dr. Corey. I think I've mentioned, I'm not, I don't remember, I know I've mentioned this to Dr. Pedalino. But I asked him for the, the graduation rate of students who attend the CTE, who participated in two years there. What is their graduation rate from their district school or district? And I think he said, he told me, I think it was ninety-five percent, but I just want to verify that.
Yeah, and I did ask, if, we had that conversation, I think we had that in Rochester. And I did ask Dr. Corey if he could pass that data along, because I think we'd be very interested in seeing that. He said he would, so I'm just
And also I'm interested in the graduation rates from the Phoenix Academy and the, and PTAC.
Well, the Phoenix Academy really wouldn't have graduates because the Phoenix Academy is kind of a No, it's a, it's an in-and-out type thing. Phoenix Academy is a place they go for a short period of time to get, to get prepared to come back to the school, so they don't really, so I mean, I think the, the return rate kind of thing might be interesting.
So that might be interesting, and PTAC also?
PTAC is now in its sixth year, so this, so the cohort that started PTAC will be finishing this year, so we could get
Right, so the, like, you know, the four-year and then there's a six-year, there are those two options, right? But also, I'm interested in knowing the regents' pass rate at PTAC.
We can get that, I mean, that, that's put into our regular data, so it's not something that we
We don't need to ask for that.
Okay. Any other board member announcements?
Just to, in, in the teaching and learning and also on the policy committees, just to thank the district staff, Dr. Phyllis Ella Van Bongen, and also John Verge for outstanding information to support our decisions at all those meetings. Just very well done, very well done, thank you.
But Mr. Verge wasn't at the policy committee, does he know what chores he has for the next That's why we need to throw our agenda.
The pile.
We just tabled everything.
It'll be in your inbox.
Okay, public participation, second chance for public participation. Wouldn't anyone like to address the board?
I'll keep this on the table. But I'd like, I'd like to lower this board in the light of, you know, suicides now one of our leading causes for dropped eighteen-year-olds. You're instituting, Dr. Jacobowitz mentioned, helping your autism groups in the, in Robert Gray. That's all towards a mental health climate, that's school shootings aren't the rise, I don't have to explain it to you. And we, God forbid, it happens somewhere in Kingston, and this is one way to combat this. Catch the lone wolf with his little, help out in the social, emotional climate of a school. Thank you for what you're doing, you are doing it. And I see many schools where this isn't happening, and that's why the problem's up again. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I read something today that startled me. This Pleasantville, New Jersey, where on Friday night they had the shooting at the high school football game. Did you hear about that at all?
Yeah, yeah.
In Pleasantville, I don't remember the, the, the years. It was something like they had, at a football game, at some sort of football event in two thousand and three or two thousand and six, they had a shooting in Pleasantville. And, and somewhere between two thousand, between that shooting and, and last Friday, maybe two thousand and eleven or something like that, there was another shooting at a football event in Pleasantville.
Pleasantville, where, New York?
New Jersey.
Pleasantville, New Jersey, the same, the same town. And there were deaths involved. Try to find it, but, anyway. There's no need for a second executive session, I don't think.
Move to a third motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.